Okay, where are we gonna start? Start in parks?
Okay, um, we will go ahead and, and pick this up. We stopped after admin, and so next up is on the fire side. I'm sorry Jenny, that was your line.
It's okay.
I'll turn it over to Jenny.
All right, uh, any comments or questions for fire department?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kim.
I want to thank Chief Niemeyer for giving me a, I think, a very thorough response to my question on the position. It was, it was down from my recollection, I thought that you had served in that role, but didn't want to make any assumptions, so, uh, appreciate your response again, so it addressed, uh, my one question, so I'm good.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move to parks and recreation.
Oxygen? Go in parks.
I hear no questions for parks or...
Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Kim.
Got a couple of questions, I think, for parks, let me grab them, my notes. The first question, Steve, is, um, kinda goes back to some of our conversations earlier about cost recovery. And, um, as I read this response, is that the fees that come in, after all the costs are covered, leaves about twenty-some thousand dollars to cover this new position. Is that accurate? Am I, am I reading the responses the right way?
Based on the FY18, which is the last full data of actual cost recovery that we have a full year's data for, it covers all direct costs, including the site supervisor position, all the scorekeeper positions, all those, but the actual coordinator position, um, there's about, you know, twenty-five thousand-ish dollars, what was the exact number? Twenty...
Twenty-four.
Twenty-two, five-seventy-two, um, that would be available to go towards either, you know, a portion of that salary or, um, uh, other overhead that you might wanna put towards it.
Madam Mayor, sorry. Steve, my assumption is to that number, that doesn't take in to account some of the cost of some of the, like, infrastructure, like the, the lights for a field, or any type of capital improvements related to any type of programming that we do with our sports league?
Uh, it does not have a capital cost recovery.
So, Madam Mayor, Steve, I really support the position. I just, I don't think that this is a position that needs to be funded with taxpayer dollars. I think that a, look at our fees, to, if this position is warranted and needed, that we should be using our fees to, to cover that particular salary, because the fee payers are the ones that are getting the direct benefit from those positions.
And I, I get where you're coming from. The, uh, in fact, one of the things that we may wanna look at with the next, um, update of the Park System Master Plan, believe it or not, it's five years old at the end of this year already, so we'd probably do a five-year update, talk about that a year from now, not for this budget cycle, but, um, you know, we, it, it could be a good time to look at what we call, you know, the pyramid of cost recovery, from those that are lar- almost wholly community benefit, to those that are almost wholly personal benefit, and the mo- where they fall on that helps to dictate how much cost recovery there should be. And this is toward the top of that pyramid, and so there is a, a greater cost recovery expected. It hasn't ever been a hundred percent, but that's what I hear you proposing, that we talk about. I think we're open to that. I'm also open to, um, looking this year at the, the fees and trying to, uh, you know, get that percentage that's available to help cover the position up higher. I think there's some, some room for that, but based on history, that's, that's the open book, that's where we are.
Makes sense. And I, I don't know, sorry, Madam Mayor.
No, that's all right, this is supposed to be more informal, so.
I applaud you for wanting to kinda move into that, that next phase of the master plan. I, I almost feel like that this, because this topic has come up a couple of times today, and I, I know that it's largely being led by, by myself, I, I don't know if it warrants waiting until we look at it just within the silo of parks, but really, citywide. And again, I don't know if there is support to having this conversation before the end of the year, or if this is a January 2020 and beyond conversation, but, um, it's, it's something that our CFO is, and I've talked a lot about it, something that I have bought in, and I want us moving closer towards that sooner, rather than moving further away, or at a later point in time, so, um, I'm, I'm not supportive of this position the way it's currently funded, but if we can identify a model based on our fee updates, that we're able to recover the cost, or nearly all the cost, I'm happy to support it at that point in time.
The, let me grab some notes, just a second. The position is important to us for, just to keep up with the, the growth. I mean, we are currently, uh, maxed out at what we can provide. Some of the numbers I, uh, gathered, um, when we, when we first created a, a sports coordinator position, we had two-hundred-and-sixty-two teams in the leagues combined. Um, since that time, oh, my mic's covering up my mic. Since that time, uh, we have added three-hundred-and-twenty-one, so, more, so more than, more than double, about a hundred-and-twenty-three percent growth. So we have five-hundred-and-eighty-three now. If we want to keep growing with the growth of the city, then we will need another junior coordinator to do that. The, the position is also one that is a high burnout position, because they're always on-call. You know, these are, every evening, they, they have to respond when a umpire doesn't show up, or, you know, there's issues at the field. Having a second position would allow us to have that on-call nature of that splits, where one can be on, one can be off, maybe trade-off weeks. I, that's an important part for me to see, just for the longevity of this position. It's one that has had a turnover rate, um, and, but I do hear what you're saying about the fee structure, and, uh, wanting to modify the street fee structure to see how much we can bring on. Right now, we're, we're following the adopted council policy that's in the master plan, and we are following that. And what I'm hearing is a desire to relook at the policy. But this, our proposal is based on the current policy.
And, and Madam Mayor, I mean, this is a, you're, you're a victim of, of your own success, right? I mean, because you hire great people, you run a great department, and there's a large demand, that, that gap, that whole of the amount that taxpayers are subsidizing grows and grows. And, again, that's, um, if we had two options, one about how are we going to find a way to pay for a second person, is much better than us having a conversation about how are we gonna grow our, our recreation program, right? I mean, this, this is, this is a good problem to have. Like I said, I, I am, I'm open to other, other solutions to find ways to pay for this position, I'm just not supportive of it under its current funding model.
I think the po- the, um, challenge here is, uh, our departments are following the current policy, and these policy discussions need to happen before budget years. And, as Steve has pointed out, we're burning out our employees, and, and that's under the current policy. We need the position now to help alleviate the, the impact that the program, as even as it exists today, is having on our personnel. The, the policy discussion can come, but that doesn't change the need, so it's...
Madam Mayor, the position's needed now, or the position's needed at the next budget year?
I think that, well...
We could use it now.
I think we could use it now.
So, so then again, why, why do we not see a, a budget amendment? I mean, that's, that's the process, is that when our departments have a need, you've got a council, I think, that is very sympathetic to having those conversations, and if we don't see it, and then we're being told in a budget meeting that it's needed now, as opposed to begin the budget year.
Well, they're not gonna come with something that is not, uh, a critical, but we are finding that we are burning out position, people in that position, and he's trying to alleviate that with the tools that he has, and using the process that is, is most commonly used, and, and that is the budget process. And certainly, he knows he has an option to bring it through, uh, in a, a budget amendment, but that's not a preferred, and, and that is a message that has been delivered by council as well.
Madam Mayor, sorry, I want to clarify, a message delivered by council about what?
Budget amendments.
That we don't support them?
That you don't like to see them, you prefer that they're in a budget...
When they're needed, yeah. If the position's needed, we should see it.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mello.
I do support this position, because I, I know how badly it is needed, and I guess to that, if, if Steve came to us in May and said, "I, I want a budget amendment," you know what our response would have been? "The budget hearing is coming up, put it in your budget." I mean, that's, that is the message that we very, other than emergency situations, very strongly put across, especially if it's close to the budget time. So, you know, I mean, I'm sure if it was urgent, urgent, um, he, we would have done so, but that doesn't, there's a difference between needed and urgent, and, but I do highly support, um, your philosophy on fee recovery for all of these independent, um, services that we're providing, that are for specific users, that the taxpayers should not be subsidizing, have no benefit, so. We're getting a new park, we're, we have, we're gonna need this position, if we're gonna grow at all, why are we spending millions of dollars on parks with, uh, fields that we wouldn't be able to utilize if we don't have the staff to...
So, Madam Mayor, I, I appreciate your saying about that this needs to be a, a separate conversation. I was under the impression, when we started having conversations about cost for shelter rentals, that that conversation was going to happen. It's been at least a year since we've had the conversation about shelters, so, um, to me, if, if we want to, um, have this conversation between now and October one, let's have that. And now we've gotta motivate her to do it, so that we've got some questions answered, so that we can then fund some of these positions with budget amendments at the beginning of the fiscal year. That's where I am. Again, that's what's great about, we're a collaborative bunch, and so, um, if everyone else feels differently, I feel like, I wish there was a way we could just know everybody's decisions, that we can move on, rather than talking about something for twenty or thirty minutes, um, but I, I still maintain that, um, holding this position until we can lay out a better, uh, cost recovery for the position.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Laura Roberts.
Madam Mayor. Oh, thank you. There we go. Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, I appreciate your position on it, um, and I can certainly see a discussion down the road, but I think it's really warranted within the next budget, and kind of as soon as possible, within the next budget cycle, because I can see us losing service for our customers, the citizens that are involved here, as well as our employees in the burnout rate. I mean, you have grown the program so rapidly, I really am kind of surprised that you haven't needed to be before us saying we need another person, because, I mean, it's amazing how, you know, the program has grown, people are loving the programs that your team puts on, and it shows, and we've gotta keep up, not only with the staff, but with the programs that you've created. So it is kind of a, a self, a self-fulfilling prophecy here, that you need more staff.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Roberts, you hit the nail on the head. I guess, just, my philosophy is that those that are using the services should be the ones that are paying for the position, not our average taxpayer, if they're not choosing to use those services.
And I do not, I do not disagree with that, it's just a matter of, I think, timing.
What I'd like to see, and I don't know if this'll resonate or not, but, um, that we fund the position, so that we can keep up with the demand, but then do that with an agreement to have the cost recovery, and talk about the fees that would need to be in place to get to the, the level that you're looking for it to be, but I think that might take more than a few weeks to...
Madam Mayor.
Steve, could you do something, um, similar to what we do with the impact fees? And, and show all costs, and what that fee would have to be to truly be a cost recovery. Right now, you do it to, to a certain extent, but then add administrative costs to it.
Right, so right now, there's a division between administrative costs and direct fees, and the current model recovers all the direct fees, but not all the administrative costs, and I...
And what that would mean.
Well, Madam Mayor, I can answer that, that is something that Brad and I and Jenny are working on, associated with the priority-based budgeting. We've been working with his team to determine all the activities, and all the costs associated to the activities, so we can calculate that exact number that you're looking for, 'cause his team can help us project how many teams, and how many, I guess, buy-ins we have, and we can divide that into the total revenue needed, to go exactly where you needed. Can't get it done in two weeks, but again, if, I like where Steve's going, I mean, if you're open to allowing us to get the position rolling, kinda like what Anne was talking about, you and I have talked about it, our goal is to have a fee-cost recovery policy in place sooner than later, and his department would fall into that bucket, just like every other activity and program we have within the city. So again, it's really, I don't, the kinda like what Joe says, we're a little bit not timely for your answer. I think where you're going is what we're anticipating to do with Brad and PBB, and activity-based budgeting, and things like that.
Madam Mayor, Todd, would, do you think we could have that presentation in middle of September? Is that enough time? I, I wouldn't ask you for two weeks, but I, I'd love for us to have this conversation before the end of fiscal year. And again, in terms of your ability, and then Madam Mayor's willingness and ability to get it scheduled on an agenda meeting, I guess.
Well, I can definitely work with the team and see how fast we can develop a policy. It'll be our first policy we've written for the city, so we have to do some research with our agents, fellow agencies, to see what they've written. But as you know, my direction, I've been trying to rewrite policies, so again, you're right, I think we're on the same page. I'll do what I can to get it done sooner than later for you.
I'm supportive, sorry, Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm supportive of that, um, as long as this is something that stays on our radar, and is presented sooner rather than later, which is why I, I like to try and speak in as close to specifics as possible, so.
I'm more happy to stay in contact with you, Luke, and we can, uh, make sure this thing stays on the whiteboard.
Great. I'm good.
Any other questions? On that, or something else?
And something else, and, and parks.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Paul.
Steve, I, I feel like it was the last budget cycle, but it might have been something else, or somewhere in between. When the last time, Mr. Craig and I had come and met with you, and we were talking about the five-mile pathway connection there.
Along Fairview?
Hole in the middle of the sidewalk, but the sidewalk does exist.
Yep.
Was that at the last budget year?
It was, it was part of the last budget year, and what we agreed to do was pull it out of the last budget cycle, work with, uh, ACHD-adjacent property owners to get more information before bringing it back. We have done that, it looks like we can, we, it looks like, based on our conversations with ACHD, that we can ha- make this work within existing right-of-way, without needing to purchase additional land from adjacent property owners, so we have not approached the, the adjacent property owners, if that's part of your question. But we have worked with ACHD, and they've said, based on the concept, that we can work with them to fit it within existing right-of-way.
Madam Mayor, um, I've walked this a number of times, um, when moving cars back and forth to JJ's, when I was there, and, um, my parents' properties over there, and I, I love pathway expansion projects, so I'm fine with them. This one I just struggle with, because that property is going to be developed, whether it's next year or ten years from now. Eventually it will happen, and that'll be part of that development. If it was just gravel, then sure, let's make the connection. This would be an expensive connection to make, where there is pavement there, it just doesn't meet the, the qualifications of being able to call it a pathway, you know, for our big beautiful map of pathways, but if it's there, you just can't have, you know, Mother Goose and five kids next to ya.
The Palmers?
Yeah, calling that, there is a telephone pole, right in the middle of, of one part of it, you, you have to go around it, but there's concrete right up to the wood, um, all the way around it, and it's, it's sufficient, it's safe, there's even a raised concrete. It's only a few inches, of course, it's, I don't know what it is, but it's clearly defined as a pedestrian facility, the whole length there, so I have a really hard time spending money on moving that faster than just doing it somewhere else and waiting, and having that develop when it develops.
And I think you've hit the nail on the head for what the philosophical discussion needs to be. It's, there, there, there's an extruded curb, and some asphalt, and a narrow sidewalk with a telephone pole in the middle of it. There is paved connection, but in our estimation, it's, it's substandard, it's, it, it wants to be a major pathway, and we'd like to see it improve sooner rather than later, so we are bringing it to you, saying, "We think it's substandard, and not as safe as it should be," and the question is, is it good enough and, uh, safe enough?
I guess the question is, as you're directing people to the pathway systems, are, are we upholding our safety commitment to our citizens by having them use it? And, and that's a philosophical question, I think, that Parks is trying to grapple with, is, they feel that, no, it's, it's not meeting that safety standard.
The other thing that we've done is, we've tried to separate the design, construction documents, and, uh, utility relocations from the construction, so that as we go into the, the design, and understand what this is really going to take, we can come back and say, "Well, now it's designed, we know exactly what it's gonna cost." Now, we will spend the money in this fiscal year doing that, um, but, uh, this is, this is design, utility relocation of the pole, things like that, to get ready for that. If you wanted us to do something, uh, come back before relocating utilities, I suppose we could do that, but we are asking for the ability to, to get an actual design, construction documents, and utility relocation done and ready, so that the following fiscal year, or whenever council approves, we can come back for the construction.
Madam Mayor. Steve, it's been a while since I've been out there. Help me, let me see, from the eyes of a user, what are the, what are the safety concerns? What, what are we...
Should we bring up the aerial photo? I don't know. Jenny, do you have the ability to bring up the aerial? So, you see the red line on the left, that is where the existing, uh, Five Mile Creek pathway
Yep.
comes up and, and tees in. The kinda salmon color is what we're talking about, um, from there over to Lakes Place, and, um, the area along the frontage has asphalt with the extruded curb, um, along that undeveloped portion. Where the car lot is, um, looks like you might be able to bring up an actual aerial photo and get better. I don't have to try and describe the existing conditions quite as much.
Thank you, Steph.
Right there, yep. Okay, so, right there, you can see the extruded curb with asphalt along it, and then it comes over to the car lot on the far right, and that's where it ties into an existing, uh, four-to-five-foot sidewalk. Right there is the, the power pole that's right in the middle of the sidewalk. And if you click 3D, you might be able to, over on the right-hand side. There we go. So that's, that, there's the existing condition right there. So it's a narrow sidewalk, there's, there's utilities, we would, what we would like to do, um, is get that connection better made, all the way over past the, the gas station to the, the signalized intersection. That's what we're looking at today.
Thanks.
Madam Mayor, so Steve, when you guys talk about the safety concern, it's the, it's the raised asphalt and the power pole?
Is it, it's not wide enough to be, and it's...
It's not wide enough, there, you have to go around the power pole, it's, it's narrow, it just doesn't meet pathway standards, so, for a multi...
Madam Mayor, I agree, it doesn't meet, I think, our pathway standards. The safety piece is the part that always gets me really fired up, and I'm, that's why I'm asking you, as kinda the experts. When I hear safety concerns, I, I mean, if the raised asphalt wasn't there, I'd say, "Oh, that's probably dangerous," but that, the raised asphalt was put there for a reason.
You're talking about the extruded curb?
Yeah, extruded curb.
But it doesn't take it all the way.
But it doesn't, it doesn't go from there past the existing businesses, there is none in that area, you can see where it ends, right there.
Sure, 'cause at that point, then you're on the sidewalk.
Yeah, although there is no curb there, if you look, I mean, it's, it's still at, at grade, but...
Madam Mayor, Steve, you're the expert, I... Steve, you're the expert. From my thought, Councilmember Palmer caught something that wasn't on my radar. I'm all about funding pathways, and if you think this is where the pressing need is, I'll support that. To me, it just seems like, I'm not seeing the safety concern that was articulated. I think that it definitely should be improved to meet the City of Meridian quality. But in terms of places that I think we could be investing in pathways, there does seem to be other places that are undeveloped that would be warranting of investment. But if you think this is the best place, I'll support your request. It seems like expanding pathway connections, even though this isn't a quote-unquote pathway connection, it connects the path. And I would rather us invest in new infrastructure than on a piece that will be brought to our standards via redevelopment.
Yeah. And what we've done in preparation for the budget process was look system-wide at where can we work with either Nampin Meridian Irrigation District or ACHD to make an impact on an already-built-out section that needs a pathway improvement that isn't just on the cusp of being developed and being developer-driven? Because we want to put our, invest our dollars in the built-out portions that are substandard. So there's a lot of other attention going on around the periphery where it's development-driven. But the two, and this is one of the two that's part of this proposal, but the two that we propose to be part of this budget process are where we see an investment of city dollars can make a significant impact on the quality of the pathway system. And Five Mile Creek Pathway has been deemed, you know, the number, the top spine that we want to get connected. So we've been focusing a lot of attention on Five Mile Creek Pathway all the way through, and this is a, you know, kind of a missing front tooth for us.
So Steve, did ACHD put that piece in, did they?
They did.
Why didn't they extend the curbing all the way down to the light?
I don't know. It wasn't part of that project.
Really, that is the crux of the safety issue, is you have a high-speed arterial road there, a major arterial road, and we're putting people on there because it is a connection to our pathway. And you have some safety aspect there, but it doesn't extend all the way down to where you're asking them to progress.
Correct. The safety aspect here is pretty good. I think once you get to where you have a four-foot and utilities on the other end.
Right there.
So go down that way. Click there. There we go.
My, yeah, it's like a lot of access stations. Yep.
All right. So the width here is very narrow, and as we continue down, that same narrow sidewalk with utilities adjacent still exists. What we'd like to do is just be able to have a continuous 10-foot pathway that would get here. Then it would cross the street. And here we have a full 10-foot-wide existing pathway section that continues north and on to the rest of Five Mile Creek Pathway. So we've got good pathway north of here, good pathway south of here, and then just right along the frontage of Fairview. This is what we currently have.
Yeah. At least over across the street.
Yeah.
All those cars, though. A lot less sidewalks, too.
Towneville didn't have sidewalks. And I think that those sidewalks were required by ACHD in, as a temporary fix until Fairview was improved.
I think they've been existing for a lot of years.
Which we keep waiting.
Twenty years ago, ten years, fifteen years, yeah, twenty years ago.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Laura.
Madam Mayor, and it doesn't look that sketchy now, but when we biked it at like 5:00 in the afternoon in busy traffic, it felt very sketchy. I would not want to have put a family of small children on that. And it's got beautiful pathways on both sides of it. So I think that's a fairly reasonable opportunity to fix that section.
That's where we think the best is. I'm not opposed.
Okay.
Appreciate Councilmember Palmer bringing that up. That heightens that.
That was helpful.
As a user. Any other questions on the Parks items? Okay. Turn this over, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to Police Department. Any comments or questions for the Police Department?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Paul.
I... I feel like we are not adequately... I'm not very good at happy mediums. I don't think we're funding enough officer positions. Previously, we have requests for more. I understand it's hard to fill positions, but it's really hard to fill a position that doesn't exist. If they're needed, and if they're available to fill, then we can make the effort to fill them. If they don't exist, they can't be, can't put them out there. Can't advertise them. Can't try to get them filled. Have an extra hard time filling twice as many later than hopefully filling at least a portion of what's possible now.
I didn't hear a question in that, but...
If anybody else agrees, then...
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Ken.
Again, I want to give the chief the chance to respond. I appreciate you bringing it up. I go back to, I think that's why we've got the budget amendment process. I think that this council is time and time again for our emergency services, been really supportive of making sure when it comes to personnel that they've got what they need. I would hope that with three new council members coming on, that would continue. And that I would always be supportive with the chief of either department comes, say they need more people. I'm happy to support that as long as they can show me the reasons why. You often, though, have to wonder, if we create too many positions, is that an extra burden on the department to try and fill them, to onboard? Chief, can you maybe provide some context at least as to why you didn't come with a request for more officers?
Madam Mayor, Council, I did. So what I did is I submitted to you what the patrol allocation study recommended based upon December 2018. That is the patrol allegation study that we have approved through council several years ago. So that's what was submitted for the initial. There's been a lot of discussion about, is that enough? How many can you hire? Should you do budget amendment? Should you fund them now? And it can go either way, but there's gives and takes with all that. So is there a need for additional officers? Absolutely. Our officers are being overworked. I'm looking at the patrol log as we speak. We're on two suicidal calls. We're on some fraud calls. That's some progress. Our officers need additional help. When it comes down to how many can you actually hire at one time, that's always our best guess. I can tell you, though, that we have a better time recruiting people when there's known positions that are open and not positions that are unfunded, because this market is really tough trying to fill positions right now. And you're going to find people that do want to become police officers are going to apply for departments that have funded positions, not unfunded positions, because it is a five-to-seven-month process to go through. And so when they look at it, they go, "I know Meridian has positions. I'm going to dedicate my time to them." Whereas they may not go, "I'm going to go apply for this department," because they may have some positions, but we don't know that yet. So as far as recruiting, it's easier to recruit when you have funded positions. Now, as far as budget amendment, I absolutely have faith in this council and this mayor that if I came to you and said, "I have six additional applicants that I could hire if they were funded," the council would approve those in a heartbeat. So the question is, is if we know we need them, why don't we fund them? Or are we willing to gamble what a new council will do as of January? And that frankly scares me a little bit. I'll still come in and pitch it, and we'll still do what is best for this community and for this department. But that does scare me a little bit, that a new council may not be as apt to approve those. So it really comes down to how do you want to fund it and when you want to fund it. So, but we did make those requests.
Madam Mayor. As for the new council, there's some people I'm supporting that are running, and I feel very confident in that they will support you in the same type of manner that we have. But how many open positions do you have right now for officers?
Madam Mayor, Council, we are in the process of filling every single position we have. I got job, two job interviews last week. I have one tomorrow morning. We are going to have, barring everybody passes the background, I have to speak that because every time I get helpful, we lose someone. With all the positions we currently have, we'll have every position filled. We do have a couple of retirements that are coming up, that those will be positions that will have to fill with new applicants. We just had additional lateral officer interviews last week. I don't know what the status is of those applicants. So we're doing really good about filling the current positions that we have.
That's fantastic. And you know I've always been a supporter and will support however many positions you say that you need.
Twenty-five.
Okay, well, in the CFP, it's eight. In the budget request, it's eight. So why is it eight if it's more needed?
The budget request was seventeen.
Was it, oh, seventeen? Was the original budget request?
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Well, it was seventeen with the SRO court form.
Yes.
That was eliminated because of funding issues with the school district. So six additional.
I think the discussion about how many positions to bring in front of council, and I came in front of the command staff as well, with the same position or statement that Councilman Kevin Erme is. You bring a budget amendment, and you have a council that supports public safety. It is our number-one responsibility. But when you're already saying you have four openings now that hopefully will fill, you have thirty-five positions looking at retirement in the next five years. You have a request for eight, and may, did I underestimate?
You did, but we don't know that exact number, but it is, that is a lower number than actually.
We were trying to bring a reasonable number that was, as long as I've been mayor, there's been three weeks that we've been fully staffed.
Yeah.
And so I'm trying to bring a balanced budget and realistic expectations. I would love to go out, and this is what we talked to the command staff. If you get a large group of qualified applicants and you actually have qualified and background-checked more than the amount of openings approved to be filled, anticipating maybe you have a couple of retirements in the next six months, fill them and come to council and say, "We're in a unique position that will actually be able to fill all of our positions plus X." Would council allow one to have the double overlap? We hire as someone's retiring? Or that we would add new FTEs? And I feel very confident with the history of our council, regardless of who the new council members are, that the history of our council has always supported the Police Department and the positions that we need. So that is why you have the number in front of you that you have. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Paul.
In a, how do you say, more of a unique situation in that it's a recruiting tool to have the number on the books. As opposed to, I don't know what positions might, you might just put out there and have ample applicants. I don't know. This is a highly skilled, very specific type of person that is required to build a position. And if it's a recruiting tool to be able to have them available on the books, I don't think it should be necessary that we receive as many qualified applicants as positions exist to have the positions available. If it means that, right now, there are a few short of qualified applicants for the positions available. If we were to increase how many positions are available that we actually would love to fill, and that means we may get, if we do six more, and that means we get three or four additional qualified applicants because they were available on the books, then I think it's a worthy cause to have it on the books because if they don't get filled, they don't cost us.
We still allocate the dollars. Madam Mayor.
We turn money back every single year of personnel in our Police Department. We also have a new program with the community policing, community service officers, and we want to see how that works. There's some moving parts. So I want our Police Department to feel that they have the support and for what they need to make sure we don't burn out our officers and continue to be a safe city. But to overinflate our personnel budget, one that we can't hire to, is something that this council and mayor have told departments. We want to keep our expectations reasonable and in line with what we can do. And if there's opportunities to do something additional, that you have a council that is ready to have your back and to fund the additional FTEs. I think it's a pretty strong statement already to say you would have eight new FTEs for police officers. I don't think people are going to count everyone in the room and say, "Oh, well, I don't stand a chance. I'm going to walk out." They won't.
Madam Mayor.
Maybe they will. Yes.
I don't want to put Crystal on the spot, but do you know on average how many new officers? I guess the chief would probably know this, too. How many new officers we hire a year for the past two or three years? And the reason why I'm asking this is that if the number is less than the amount of officers that we're requesting, I tend to kind of roll along with the mayor's saying and bring back a budget amendment. But if we feel like that we can fill more positions in this fiscal year, then I am supportive of increasing that number. I just want to make sure it's based on data about what we can do. Because one of the things I think that our department should be really proud of, that you see in the video you produced and you hear every time I talk to one of your officers, is the culture. And I know that I would be a council member that if we had funded positions at the end of the year and they hadn't been hired, I'd be saying, "Well, why did we put them in our budget in the first place?" So I guess the question is, how many do you think you could hire in a particular year and still be able to maintain that culture that makes our department so strong?
Madam Mayor, Council. Madam Mayor, Council, if you recall, last year, we foregone requesting position for that, that exact fact, as we were still in the process of filling positions. We're in a very good position this year of having those, those filled. So, it's not uncommon for us to be able to train eighteen to twenty people in a given year, we just need to have the applicants. I can't tell you what the trends are, because we have good years and we have bad years, we have good batches of people, bad batches of people, depending on what's currently in the media, sometimes they want to do the job, sometimes they don't. And so, we've gotten really lucky some years and have had fifteen to twenty applicants to choose from, and then we've had other years where we had two or three. So, it's kind of the apples to oranges comparison. I can tell you right now that, based upon the information and feedback I've heard, we're gonna pursue to fill six additional bodies. Obviously, we're not going to offer those jobs until we get confirmation from council, but I got a pretty firm, pretty firm commitment that you would support additional people. So, if we find them, we'll find them. The only drawback that I come up with is that we might have to change how we do things and give HR some, some leeway, is that we can only advertise positions that we have openings for. So, if we have filled those positions, we can't advertise any more positions until we have funding authority to do so. So, we'll have to go manipulate that a little bit to, so there's no way I could tell you that we have six additional bodies to hire, because I can't post those and recruit those. So, we'll do everything we can to try to fill those positions and get back to you and make those requests, but, you know, there's a whole bunch of, you know, little unintended consequences you gotta deal with as well.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Hall-Robin.
Madam Mayor and Chief, so your original proposal had a total of sixteen officers?
The original proposal had seventeen in there, but one of those would not be included as a part of the, of the staffing allocation. So, there's, there's sixteen police officers that were in there, yes.
Okay. And you are currently, Madam Mayor, follow-up?
Ten.
And you are currently kind of up to date on the positions that you have open, if everything?
We're in, we're in the process of filling the last open positions that we have. So...
Not counting the?
Not counting the ten that's in front of you in this?
Right.
Proposal, yes. So, we're currently actively recruiting more people to fill the new funded positions, hopefully that this session will, will bring us.
So, I, given all that information, I would definitely be supportive of somewhere between eight and the sixteen needed.
Well, hopefully, it's ten to sixteen, because eight would be cutting us back.
We have ten in front of you right now.
You have ten in front of you now.
Okay.
So, don't, don't make it eight.
It says eight, so.
It's an officer.
Ten.
Because there's different positions.
I think it's, it's, yeah, it's, so, we need, we want to look at sworn positions, I think, because one of those is a training sergeant, one of those is a K-9 officer, and then there's eight additional police officers. But, we're all police.
That's the enhancement I'm looking at, because I can't read that one from here, and this one puts my back to everybody.
It's, it's, it's ten sworn positions.
Ten.
So, somewhere between ten and?
Eight between.
Sixteen.
Yeah.
I would be happy to support.
Council, here's, here's kind of what I'm, a couple of different paths, I think we could head down. I think I'm supportive of raising the, the number probably by three, with the commitment to the chief of the department, that come January, things change, I'll be happy to continue to advocate for additional officers as needed, to bring a budget amendment based on, based on the need. I guess the follow-up question is, Chief, is if you're getting these four new officers hired, is there a need to fund additional officers today? In terms of, you just went through a recruitment, are, are we in the same scenario where you've got stellar candidates that can't offer the positions because the funding's not available?
Madam, Madam Mayor, Councilman Kevin, I do not believe we're in that position today. We are currently filling open positions that we have. I will say that about a month, month and a half ago, we had an opportunity to be completely filled, and we had one additional candidate, and I did propose to the mayor that we had a retirement coming, and asked her if she would support hiring this additional person, and she said, I would support that, we were gonna come back in front of council to see what council would say, and then that person washed out. So, we are currently just filling our open positions, we're not in a position where we feel like we're turning people away because we can't offer them something. But also, I'd like to share with you, if you were to give additional police officers, there's always the, like I said, the unintended consequences, and Jenny and I had talked about this, and she probably knows what I'm gonna bring up with vehicles, is we supply one vehicle for every three officers. Well, when you hired eight officers, that was, is that three vehicles, is that two vehicles? We opted to go on the lower end and only go two vehicles, and then I discussed with her that if we were to get any more additional bodies, we would have to add vehicles. So, if you're gonna add three, that's just what we're talking about hypothetically, it's gonna be two more cars. So, just, when you calculate that, it's three, every three positions is one car, so.
Hi, can you tell me how many households taxes that would be?
How many cups of coffee?
Give a second. My hundred is there. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
But, I, I know, I, I'd love to have my five hundred dollars go with officers and several other things. So, you don't need it today, but I, I don't know if you would like to be able to be advertising or whatnot, in between now and October, if you get to that point, just that the whole discussion has been, even if it's September, and you're like, I want to be advertising a position, come to us, and let's rectify it and create a position. We're not wasting times and losing opportunities to get somebody good, because we're waiting for October first.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer, I, I feel confident in the direction I'm getting from, from council and, and all with working with HR and with the mayor, we'll proceed. And, I guess if we upset someone, we'll beg for forgiveness, but we're gonna push and try to fill the positions, because that is one of the number-one things that's always cited about how great of a city we are, is how safe of a city we are. And we know that times are changing, but people still feel safe, and they still come here, and so we want to do everything in our power to make sure that we don't lose that. So, we'll, we'll push forward based upon the direction we're hearing, what's best for our community, and we'll, we'll make it happen. And then Todd can work the magic forms to make sure that we're doing it properly.
Speaking of making the magic happen and all whatnot, I'm gonna hand this over to Jenny. Jenny has calculated what your three, I think it was three was the proposal by somebody?
What I had suggested.
Three plus two cars.
Three, three people, two cars, I'll hand it over to Jenny.
Okay, so, the, what I'm hearing is, you would like to have a number of three police officers with two vehicles. The total is four hundred fifty-one thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars.
So, note that the mayor did provide you a balanced budget?
Four fifty-one, six forty-three.
So, with this, this would take us out of budget at this moment, by four hundred fifty-one thousand.
Madam Mayor, Todd, did the seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars that was presented at the start of the meeting take us out of a balanced budget?
Did we parking lot, or we didn't balance that yet, but we have, you're a hundred percent correct?
Hundred percent.
What percentage, Madam Mayor, if we were to keep the seven twenty and add this, what would that bring us up to? So, the one point one-two percent, one point eight-five or?
Two percent.
The question is, if we're going to up the police officers from eight to eleven, the items that we're looking at, it will be?
It is one point five.
One point five, yes.
About, another one point five. One point five equals half a million, because our three percent this year is a one million, almost one million even. So, if you need about half a million, so it'll be one point.
Because with the seven twenty, a portion of that was?
So, I'm not even counting that.
One point one-two is what that would have equated to.
Because you shift it to something else, somewhere else.
Got it, you got it. Yeah, so, to get you four hundred and fifty thousand or half a million, is one point five percent of the three percent. How we fund the seven twenty, that's a different discussion, different day.
Madam Mayor, Jenny, so, without the other shift in the seven twenty, what, what does seven twenty represent as a percentage of the, of the three? If the other shift hadn't happened from, I think it was the fund bus?
About two point, two point three.
So, if we weren't gonna utilize fund balance to fund the fixed route transit?
Much better way of saying it.
It would be roughly around two point one.
Two point one, plus one point five.
Expensive business, right?
And we are including the discussion about seven hundred and twenty. So, if we were gonna fund seven hundred and twenty, not, are we talking about not funding the three officers, or what? I guess I need some clarification.
Either way.
Okay, so, the seven?
Utilizing fund balance for both situations, both police and the seven twenty.
Look, the answer?
It's all just shifting numbers around, really irrelevant, but.
Right now, tight.
If you look at using the three percent, you could fund the, the benefits and compensation and two officers for your three percent.
Three percent equals one million, and right now, you're adding seven twenty plus four sixty, well, we don't have enough money in our three percent to allow you to do that. Yeah.
Any other questions for police? I think we're still on police.
Here we are, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Are we, are we done wrapping at least the conversation?
Two officers only need one car.
Yes.
Round staffing.
And that would be two hundred and eighty thousand for two officers and one car.
Madam Mayor, Chief, do you have a, an image of the, the emergency rescue vehicle that we can either staff and pull up, or that we can see?
It's in the book.
It was, Madam Mayor?
It's in the book.
Counsel, it was part of the?
It's in the book.
It's in the book, and it's?
I apologize.
Part of the, part of the original presentation, but it is a commercial F-350 van, is what it looks like. Looks like a commercial delivery van. Little taller.
No.
But.
Jenny?
Say what?
Was the picture supplemental?
Yeah. That, that's a perfect example, it would, it would look like the prime vans, just white in color.
Luke, sorry, might have been given to you as a supplemental, maybe you put it, maybe you put it in the back, because it came in afterwards, I'm guessing.
There it is, right there.
There it is.
You can look behind.
Camera.
So, the outside looks like a prime van, inside is a little different.
Mr. Kim.
Chief, appreciate again, both the, the narrative in our budget packet, as well as any response in the QA section. One of the comments that was in there was about that it would, I think, have kind of a significant lifespan, because we're not planning to use it on a regular basis. Lots of people have different definitions of the word significant, and I guess from your perspective, is this a five-year replacement vehicle, is this a ten-year, is it a twenty-year, is it a three-year? What, when you talk about significant, I think it's important for council to have a good understanding as to what you mean by that.
Madam Mayor, Council, it would be at least ten years, because then we can include it in the impact fees in the future. But, since this is the new vehicle of this type, we don't know. But, I would guess somewhere between ten and twenty years. I guess I can get that far out, because I won't be here for you to hold it against me. Ten years minimally, but it could be longer. And, the idea is behind is, is that these vehicles are expensive, they are customized for us, and so, it's not something you want, it's kind of like a fire truck, it's not something you want to replace until you absolutely need to replace it.
And I think that's what our police department talked about, is can this be delayed another year? Well, yeah, maybe, but when you need it, you need it. Do you want to have it, or wish you have?
Madam Mayor, I'd also like to point out too, is we did look at other funding sources. I mean, this is not something we want to put on the backs of our citizens, our taxpayers. We did look at other funding sources, trying to come up with this vehicle, because we do believe it's something that's needed, and it's needed today. We weren't successful in that, we believe that it's a great benefit to our community and to our citizens. They're the one that's gonna benefit from it the most when we're trying to come rescue them, when we face the types of calls that we're facing today. And, and also, it doesn't look like a SWAT or military vehicle, it blends in quite well, that we really appreciate.
Especially if we prime paint it like a prime van?
Prime.
Prime.
Amazon would prob, I'm, Amazon would probably sue us, and they got more money than we do, so I don't think we want to do that.
Prime delivery, it's crime.
But, we could do prime deliveries on the side with it, I guess, if you want to fund another position. And we'll make some money and pay for itself, but, you know, all joking aside, we can make it look however we want to make it look. We can, that's exactly how it's, it's displayed, and we can make it whatever color or whatever.
Purple.
Design. Fuchsia, I heard fuchsia back here from the, from the group too, so.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kim.
Appreciate this extra explanation. This was a budget request I had initially been fairly opposed to, because of my concern about the perception in our community about a SWAT-style van. Despite your, I think, narrative saying the best intentions, a quick Google search doesn't pull up anything new, obviously, as council recalls, I wasn't here for our first meeting and watched the benefit of YouTube and didn't have the opportunity to see that image. So, I, I'm supportive of it at this point. If it's something the department needs, I think it looks appropriate for our community. I'm always just very leery of this militarization creep in law enforcement across our country. Our city has done a really good job of resisting that, and to, to the chief's point about trusting the council of today, but always being cautious about a future council, I trust our department and our leadership and our, everyone in our department today, but it's about thinking about how our community's gonna live twenty, thirty years from now. So, I'm supportive of it at this point.
Chief, you could fund it by selling advertising on the side?
No, we're not doing that. We can afford it, we can pay for, it's expensive.
Any other questions?
In place, far place.
Madam Mayor.
Getting?
Sorry, Chief, I, I do have another question about the Penlink software. Because this vendor creates a whole host of software tools that are used by local, state, and federal law enforcement agencies, I want to get a, a better understanding about what this tool is and how we will be using it. Candidly, I've, I've got? Candidly, I've got some concerns.
Right.
And I would love to get some better understanding before I support their cases.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Kavner, this software does not extract anything out of anywhere. It only operates on what you put into it. So it's data in, data out. What it does is it saves hundreds of staff time hours of detectives trying to decipher information that we have collected through a legal means of a search warrant or through a subpoena or information that people has given to us. So we've obtained that information. It's in a convoluted manner. We can download that into this program that actually absolutely will shift it around and make sense of what it means in a very short period of time instead of the hundreds of hours a detective would take go online by item, by item, by item.
For counsel's benefit, I spent a little bit of time researching this software tool. And I think it's improving. There's been some really amazing successes. I think law enforcement in Pasadena caught Scott Peterson by using, I think, a similar software tool after he had murdered his wife. I think that's really, really beneficial. My somewhat apprehension about this is that, as I understand it, I think this tool that we're looking at can also create profiles of our citizens, whether they are involved in a criminal investigation or not. For instance, if I have a family member that is buying or selling drugs and we're Facebook friends, that it's possible that I could have a profile created for me by law enforcement through this software tool. And I guess for me, Chief, my biggest concern, I want to make sure that you guys have every legal tool necessary to catch every bad guy as possible. What I don't want to have is the privacy and the liberty of law-abiding citizens be compromised in order for us to get there. Does that make sense?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Kavner, it absolutely makes sense. And you're speaking the same thing that we want to speak. The one thing, though, I don't know if that software does that, so that's new to me. But there's nothing that prevents us from doing that today, regardless of whether we have that software or not. So if that's the only hang-up, then we probably shouldn't rely on just that because you can create any sort of, if that's what we were into, we could create any sort of profile we wanted to do today with whatever we have in our hands or whatever we Googled or whatever. So, but I don't know if the software does that or not. So you might know more than I do on that.
And Chief, I think it's more important for counsel to be aware?
Yep.
That this is somewhat of a brave new world that law enforcement is headed down that has, I think, we talked a lot about kind of philosophical beliefs and conversations. And this opens the door a little bit to head to a place that I think will be much larger conversations that future councils will be faced with. I just think it's important that if this is the path we head down, that we go down eyes wide open.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Kavner, I will tell you that with the command staff that you have here, can't speak for the future, but we don't push the envelope. We don't take risks like that. There's been a lot of stories that you've seen in the press where law enforcement has taken risks and kind of stepped over the line or right on the line. And we don't do that because that creates bad case precedent out there. And so we submit this with every good intention. But unfortunately, I can't look in that crystal ball and speak for the future law enforcement. But I can guarantee you with the law enforcement you currently have today, that's not the intended purposes of this software.
Madam Mayor, and I think we are, we're saying the same thing. I don't have any concerns about our current, we talked a little while ago about the culture. The culture of our department and our citizens have been. The nervousness comes that I don't want to do anything to jeopardize that. And so it's not about the current team today, but that conversation that a council has 30 years from now about what are, how do we get here? Some of these things happen, again, well-intended, little steps at a time.
Please don't profile me based on my Facebook friends.
It's happening. You're such an open book, it's easy to do though.
Any other questions for the chief? Any other questions for the chief or his team?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milo.
This is not a budget question. It's in the CFP, so it's more probably a Todd question. It may or may not be an error. On page 17, in the police year 2021, we've got two different line items. Police officer, six FTE, and police officers, three. And that's the only year that there's two.
I can answer that question. That's the six police officers that were originally requested, that weren't funded, that were pushed into 2021.
So a line item got added?
Yeah.
The three was already there and then you added the six?
Three was already there for 2021. There were six additional for 2020. Since we didn't fund them in the budget, we pushed them to 2021.
That makes sense.
See, Todd, I can even answer some of your finance questions.
491. So that's, yeah, six, 823.
Anything else? I thought maybe I would have, before we move into the parking lot, to talk compensation and benefits just prior to the presentation you'll get next week. Kind of the groupings of what we're looking to fund. Yeah, the cost items.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. So the mayor and I chatted, and I wanted to come back and give you some additional information before we got into the parking lot items in regards to the benefit recommendations that the compensation committee has been vetting out and will be a part of our proposal that we will be making to you in our formal presentation, the 16th. So I mentioned to you earlier that we had four benefit enhancement recommendations that we were going to bring forward. So I'd like to talk about those for you today and answer any questions that you have. So first of all, let me say that the recommendations that we're putting forward to you today are a direct result from the benefit valuation that the consultant Gallagher that we hired this past year to provide to us. Some of the information in that result report are things that the city is already actively doing. The things that we vetted out were things to help make our benefit package more competitive. One of the things that either myself or Christina has done during the course of the last budget year and through conversations this year was share with you based on conversations that we're having with recruitment efforts, job offers. What's out there trending is that we were getting a lot more questions around our benefits. And taking a step back and taking a look, it had been a while since we had actually reviewed our benefit package. The result of that was that our benefit package is average, in a nutshell. So we took a look to see what could we propose to you to strengthen the competitiveness of our benefit package as we move forward. And the four recommendations we are going to formally provide to you would, first one would be to offer an employee match to a Percy Choice account at 100% up to 2% of an employee salary. The estimated cost of working with the finance team for that would be about $207,562.
One more time, sorry.
Okay, $207,562.
Crystal, what is that based off of? Assuming, I mean, when you have something you haven't done, you have to take, make assumptions of how many people will participate and how, to what extent?
So I'm going to defer to Todd a little bit. We have a current utilization of 30% of our employees participate in a Percy 401K Choice. So if you assume that those 30% would also participate in this program plus a forecasted extra percentage, we're talking roughly that amount of money. And utilization, please.
This kind of goes where the mayor was going about not getting too far into the details with you guys. Rough estimates. We have a lot of work to do. So again, I think the 720 was a, these are all rough numbers that we've given you. Our best estimates at the moment, we still have some fine tuning to do. We think that's our ceiling. So to ask the question, how do we get there? I love you where you're going, and that's the time we need. But I think we can give, I think if we just give you the conceptual ideas that we're promoting to you, just know that the values aren't going to be right where we are because we still need to edit and not edit the data and review the data. Because what portion of our staff are using a compensation investment plan of? That's what we still need to fine tune.
I just wasn't sure if you had talked to, you know, done some research on what is the average in companies that do offer the match or other cities or?
Great question.
For the exact mathematics solution or formula, mainly just kind of a general idea of what kind of stuff?
Which is why it's taken so long is because HR has been trying to get that data as well as finance, looking at utilization rates as they currently stand. And those?
With a match, it would probably be greater. We're trying to bring back next?
Next week, yeah.
Next week.
Madam Mayor, Crystal, I had intended to ask any questions. I appreciate that this information is now being shared with us. In effort to streamline our process, if counsel does have questions on this, don't obviously catch you off guard when this is presented. Do you want us to kind of follow the protocol like we do with the budget and send collectively, if council members have questions today, to you or to Crystal? And that could all be addressed at the presentation on the 16th?
For Crystal, that would be awesome.
Send them to me, that'd be great, and I'll vet them out with the committee.
Great.
Great. So I'll keep it very high level then with the other benefits that we will be coming forward with the recommendation. The second would be to offer a vacation rollover program to our employees one time per year with a maximum of 40 hours that they could roll over into a state 457 or a 401K Choice program.
You say 40 hours?
Up to 40 hours.
And that is less than what we offered to the fire union, but we felt it was comparable to what other cities are doing. And the committee felt comfortable with that. At least it brings this up more to par to what all employees get.
Well, I like that it's a rollover, not a buy-in. Yeah.
It's a rollover. Another benefit recommendation that we'll be bringing forward formally would be to increase our tuition reimbursement program. Currently, today, we're at $2,000 per fiscal year. And the recommendation to get us into a competitive arena with our benefit package would be to move that to $2,600.
Sorry, I said, I was going to ask Crystal, but just following the format. The first one, you shared what the kind of estimated cost was. And so for the vacation rollover, again, I'm just trying to track the numbers, that's all.
I know. So like Todd said, extremely.
Yes.
Of that because I don't think we were prepared to share that piece of it with you today. And I kind of dove into that. So the tuition reimbursement is about $4,327 on estimate based on current utilization and projections. Vacation rollover is about $233,334 on estimate. We will be coming forward to you with other benefit enhancements that don't have a financial impact. So I'm sharing the ones today that have a proposed financial impact. And those are the ones directly related to the benefit valuation and the benefit recommendations. The other piece of this that we still need to finalize next week when we meet as a compensation committee is the actual compensation pay program recommendations. So this is a portion of that 720,000, knowing that we will be sharing additional information with all of you next week regarding the actual compensation program changes that we'll bring forward for recommendation. And that'll cover the additional distance between $445,000 and the 720.
Madam Mayor.
What was the 400?
I don't know. I just, what was it? The quick math was for those three? Right, 401K, vacation rollover tuition reimbursement is about $445?
Yes.
Okay, quick math.
Madam Mayor, you said there were four? So the other ones?
It doesn't have a financial impact, so I didn't know if this was the setting. I'm happy to share it with you. We would be looking to come forward with a recommendation to provide employees a two-week paid paternal, maternal medical leave for the birth or adoption of addition to their family. But that one has no financial cost to the budget for us to request and implement that as well. And then we'll be sharing some of the other things that the survey recommended that the city is already in progress of working on.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so we take a 10-minute break and then we'll go into parking lots.
Sounds great. Mark?
Do you need a larger?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, on our break, we had discovered a minor adjustment to our fire department personnel budget. I reduced that budget by $7,000 due to the adjustment. Just want to bring that into your guys' light.
Stick out a break and see what else we can find.
Couple of other items before we get into the parking lot. There were two things that finance department was going to circle back with you guys on. The first one is the past history of council travel. What we found for the past three years were there are a couple of council members who traveled in fiscal year 2019, and do you guys need to know then?
No.
And two council members traveled in fiscal year 2017. The other outstanding item that we were going to discuss was there was a question from council about budget remaining in the MIAC NLC trip. The total costs remaining budget was $3,717. So were there any other items, outstanding items that we need to research on? Those are the only two that I notated. Those were the only that I did.
So, Madam Mayor, so I didn't know that we were back, and so, oh, sorry, Dean.
I didn't know that we were back, so I guess I missed what you were saying. I'm sorry, Jenny, I apologize to council.
Okay. Should I start from the beginning? Okay, we'll start from the beginning. We had a minor adjustment to our fire department personnel budget. We adjusted it down by $7,000. There are a couple of outstanding items that I've taken note that we were going to circle back with council members on. The first one was the council member traveling. So there were two individuals, two council members traveled in fiscal year 19, and two council members traveled in fiscal year 2017. The other item was budget remaining for the MIAC NLC DC trip. The question was, what is the budget remaining? The amount is $3,700.
Thank you.
With that, shall we move into our parking lot questions? Okay. First one I have notated from the top was the compensation proposal of 720, $724. Were there any discussion on this? Good to include? The next item that I've highlighted in the parking lot is the streetlights. There are a couple of questions on possibly adding to this budget proposal?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Yeah, after the points that were made that would be, I don't know, fairly easy is the right word, but possible to double the portion that's spent on replacing or upgrading or whatever terminology you use, the old style to the LED versions, especially given that it only takes a few years for that expense to pay for itself before the end of my not to happen second term. This cost that I'm trying to make happen will pay for itself and go on as a net benefit to the city. Money-wise, so at least doubling it.
Dell, did you look and see if that was a possibility?
Yeah, it was a possibility.
Madam Mayor and members of council, we did do a little bit further digging. So I think the best next money would be spent if you wanted to add funding would be to increase the LED, the high-pressure sodium LED conversion. That, what we would recommend is add another $50,000. It can be fairly easily managed. You don't have a lot of outside design fees, those kinds of things, and it's fairly quick. Just as an order of reference, it's about $350 per head when we're making that exchange. But we've got, we've got about 300, close to, close to 300 lights that we could do that are between 100 and 250 watt high-pressure sodium that could be accomplished. that are between 100 and 250 watt high-pressure sodium that could be accomplished. So recommendation one would be to add that to the LED conversion, streetlights. The second part of that would be new streetlights. And as Warren indicated, I think we're probably reaching our capacity to internally design and manage that. And what's likely to happen based on this effort is that we would have to consume quite a bit of our budget just on outside design and consultant fees. And so I would not recommend adding any more to that until such time that we can free up some of Al's time, which is a, which is a likely proposition considering that as we look forward, the, the cost of managing the digline portion of that requirement now to mark the, the power line runs to streetlights, I think is gonna be a likely candidate to bring that internal. Would be back, probably requesting an FTE and include it as part of our overall locating group, which we currently have two. But I, I think we're looking at six figures annually to try to accomplish that through an outside contractor. And it's consuming a lot of Al's time in trying to manage that. So, long story short, we get that cleaned up, Al will have more time for streetlight. I think that'd be the time to bring back a request for incremental streetlight dollars if the council has an appetite at that point in time.
Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, so based on just kind of rough estimates, that should be about $105,000 to cover the lights that we have that could be changed out. So, we're throwing that, instead of 100,000, it could be 105,000 and get them all done.
No.
No?
Well, we have in the current budget is 50,000 for LED replacement.
Right.
$50,000 for new lights. And we could recommend up to another $50,000 of LED replacement. So you'd be looking at a total budget of $150,000.
Yeah, sorry, I'm talking about the, just, we're right, and we're just talking about the LED replacement right now. We were, I think, I'm pretty sure, instead of raising that to 100, raise it to 105. Based on the numbers you gave and the cost per, it should kinda, I know, but then it should be able to take care of all of them.
So she wants to give him more.
No, I know. I guess, I made the mistake of kind of rounding. So we have 155, 200 waters, and I saw a number here of 133 additional lights. So I'm not quite at 200. I rounded up by a handful, so.
So 100,000, 100,000 would cover, yeah. Take care of most of it.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, I move that we change the LED, well, no, what is the?
Conversion.
Conversion budget to $100,000.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum. Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Madam Mayor. Mr. Palmer.
Now that, no doubt, my net contribution to today's discussion will result in an increase to the budget. Just historical, another historical moment here. Just to offset that a touch, Cameron had mentioned to me that the, the per diem numbers were off a little bit, so there was actually another few hundred dollars in savings there.
Two different pots of money, just.
Well, that's true, too. I room him.
Sorry, I didn't want to be a joke, do I? I just, yeah.
The next parking lot item is under clerks. Their FT requests for administrative assistant. Is there any further dialogue or discussion with this position?
Was there additional discussion for this? Additional information needed? And do we want to have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll be brief. I think that my reading of the tea leaves shows that council supports this position, so I don't think it's worthy of continuing any more discussion about pulling it at this particular point in time.
I didn't know you could read tea leaves, that's awesome. Tell my future later.
That's great.
I guess, Madam Mayor, maybe with, just sorry, one anecdote. As we had the conversation about cost recovery related to parks, you know, this is a position when I was the liaison, was first kind of explained to me, would be covered by the revenue that we were gonna generate from the scooter program. And that changed, and much of the, I think, demands of the position had changed somewhat. So I guess this would be another position that I would like involved in the cost recovery discussion about how much our taxpayers are paying for this position versus their job duties that are assigned. Making sure there's an appropriate balance.
Those are two good departments to start that cost recovery analysis with.
We will make note of that and keep you guys informed how it's going.
Okay, the last parking lot item that I have is under council. We were gonna discuss about the governmental accountability officer position.
Yes, council originally had an amount set aside of 25,000, 20,000 for professional services. What was it?
I'll look it up.
And in talking with our CFO, the preferred route was to, as council found, items that needed a third-party consultant and someone that was more specialized in a specific topic to come through a budget amendment process. So it was transparent in what it was that we wanted evaluated, and, and it was specific to a dollar amount.
$15,000.
$15,000. So that was the approach, and so we withdrew that budget amount requested.
Madam Mayor, do we know what that $15,000 was based on? Is it just a, we didn't know, which would make sense, we've never been down this road, and we just wanted to pick a, a number that we thought would encompass what the cost would be? Should the council want to be able to do that?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cameron.
I, I support returning that back in to the budget. I think that specifically because of transparency, we should include that as something in our budget that we're gonna publish to the public. To me, I think not only is it a resource that the council will have at their disposal should it arise, it also reminds the public that all levels of government in this building are committed to accountability at all levels. So I think it's appropriate to include the budget. It will also allow council to know what type of a budget we have to work with should an issue or concern or an area of diving deeper with the scope of work be presented.
Well, certainly those contracts would come in front of council as, as the need came up. Okay? So we'll add that back in. Oh, do we need a motion?
Your meeting. It's your meeting. Would you like us to make a motion?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cameron.
I move that we return the $15,000 budget allocation for a government accountability officer contractor to the city council budget.
Thank you. In a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Just to be consistent with the streetlights. Okay, Jenny? You had to change that Councilwoman Palmer noted in the building department?
I do not.
Madam Mayor, we have not delivered that to her on that one yet.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, I think it was like 500 bucks.
It was Jenny.
Yeah.
500 bucks? It's 500.
That's enough to cover the mayor's cell phone. Almost, almost. Oh, it was 50, 50 bucks a month. 600 a year.
We do have a cap.
Now.
Oh, before.
This budget, before she did on her own with the 100 bucks.
Okay. Any change further, Jenny?
With that, I think we should, so I've added the $15,000 for, in City Council's department. We should look at the bottom number to see where we need to be at, because I don't have any more parking lot items. So right now, we're at 419,000 that we still need in additional revenue to cover. With all the changes, other than the 500, let me adjust that really quick.
Madam Mayor, does that include any changes with the police numbers?
No, it does not.
Do we need to make a motion regarding that if we, or have more discussion?
If you, if you, if council would like to consider adding to the budget, yes, please.
Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I move that we add three additional officers and two cars.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, I, I do, based on the CFP for next year, the number that is in the book for that expense is different than the number that was given to us earlier. So according to this, the total number, well, I said, maybe that's only, maybe it's only one car, maybe that's, it doesn't say, but 369,000, is that just one car? All right. As I'm reading that out loud, I realize that might be why the number's less, 369,000. So $74,000 for one car. I guess that's probably more than a car. All right, never mind.
Any other discussion?
Can we see how it impacts?
There's 3% people.
And we have to drop stuff. Or?
We have some options.
Oh, wait, are we doing 11 or 14?
That would be 11.
11.
Jenny, have you used fund balance for the VRT?
I did.
Okay, so it's in there. Thank you.
The fund balance that we're using is 555. Why is it was 207?
So right now, as, as it stands, we're what, 871 in the hole?
Mm-hmm.
So we need to find 871,000 more dollars to balance this budget. We do have a proposal. We could use some fund balance dollars to pay for the police rescue vehicle. We have a fund called the Public Safety Fund. It's supposed to be utilized for public safety vehicles. It sounds like it fits that. If you wish to, again, I need your kind of direction, but we could utilize 133,680 of fund balance, so that would reduce your gap if you guys want to. Again, we have two, about 1.7 million in the accounts. And we are saving it for future fire truck needs that Mark and I have been working on over the next three or four years. But again, 133, you know, we could probably live with that, but not too much more, or we start impacting future fire truck replacements.
And I think also that it is, this then qualifies under the CIP or, and potential impact fee down the road.
Going forward, this will be an impact fee eligible item, yes.
Let's do it.
All right, we'll utilize 133,680 from our Public Safety Fund. And that is why we have these funds, guys. We have put money into this to tap into for these discussions. So this is exactly why we have these fund balance uses. So with that, that sits us at about 737,000 still remaining to fund, to make this a balanced budget for us to come back to on July 23rd. And we have discussed with you, propose to use the 3% allowable to fill the gap, to fill the void. If you, we have up to $1 million. It's a little over 1 million, but if you use 1 million as how much money we could tap into using the state allowable law of property tax increases.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Given that this would have no negative effect on the arts, we were to adjust the ordinance to allow us to be able to reduce from the 50,000, if we could be able to differ funds elsewhere, we'd be able to, that doesn't solve our problem, but it gets us 18,000 closer. Still spending 50,000, well, 80-something thousand dollars on the arts, but. I have 1.2 million in front of me. 99% of it, none of you want to hear, but there's an, you know, three and a half inches closer.
Madam Mayor, I guess maybe then a question for council. There were, there were numerous items that we went through earlier that I think I said, let's remove. I think almost all of those were supported to stay within the budget. I guess a question would be, in, in light of this number, is there anything on there that anyone wants to reconsider? If the answer's no, then that, that answers that part of the puzzle. If we're not going to reduce costs, then we only have one other option that presents us, presents itself. So I guess I would, the items that I supported polling for a year, I still believe for the most part are worthy of being held for a year. But if any of you have since changed your mind in light of this number, now would be the opportune time for us to discuss that. And if not, then.
I don't remember what your, Madam Mayor, I don't remember what your list is.
What?
I don't remember what your list is, other than the clerk's admin assistant.
Madam Mayor, I, I did come with a list. I think I went through each budget piece about if, if it warranted it includes or not, but there were items such as Mr. Palmer talked about, reduction in the public art requests. There's a $10,000 sponsorship, again, the clerk's office position.
Public Works.
That would come from enterprise funds. So I mean, yeah, I, Madam Mayor, for the benefit of, of council, in light of our conversation about public works and vehicle replacement, I chose not to engage in that in the other departments where I thought it was warranted and didn't seem worthy of our time. So I think there's lots of opportunities where if we are looking to reduce costs, that we can find some savings. I just don't want to repeat what we did this morning.
Madam Mayor, and now that today, whether the police or the benefit situation, we are now into the scenario of anything in the budget, for it to stay in there, means tax increase. So.
And we grow our city at a rate that our resources might otherwise be constrained with. So, every time we approve a large land use application, we are hiring clerks and police and firefighters, and I've said this before and said it again, so we've already made these decisions. They're otherwise unfunded mandates. Unless we want to compromise our level of service, which has made our city successful, which I do not want to do, we've, we've committed to this. The police is a great example. If nobody blinks an eye at that, there's one reason why we needed these additional officers quicker, because we're growing quicker. We knew that six months ago, so we shouldn't, I would not reluctant at all to utilize the one revenue source that's available to maintain our level of service and take care of our employees. So, for the, especially for the purposes of today, I'd balance it with the available revenue that the legislature's provided for us in lieu of cutting and impacting our level of service. I think those decisions have already been made.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cap.
I think it's an important distinction, not cutting services, we're just choosing not to fund budget requests. I think there's a big difference between that. We're not in a position where we're saying we can't continue to fund our general obligation. In fact, what we're saying is, we're choosing not to fund some requests, much like other requests that became through the department process, were chosen not to be funded for a variety of reasons. So, it's not, I guess, the case, I think, of us cutting something. I know that term gets used a lot, um, we're choosing what we're, what we think is prudent to fund in this year's budget or not. We thought it was prudent to fund more officers than was requested. I think that's, that's, that's the appropriate decision. I don't think that, to imply that choosing not to fund something is cutting, because we're not reducing our already current level of service.
Madam Mayor, I don't know if that's true in every case. That's where the river meets the road.
Sure.
And use a clerk's office as a great example. And it's, it's, it's difficult to articulate a specific metric, level of service in clerk's office, but we understand that method and manner in which the work gets done there can't slow down, the quality can't decrease, and the vetting that got to the recommendation for new administrative assistant, I thought, is consistent with the city strategic plan and the purposes that it promotes. And public safety does the same thing. So, we're assuming that these requests are based upon maintaining those levels of service. I'm not talking about a $10,000 sponsorship, it's everything else, so.
Sure. And, and Madam Mayor, I think to, to that point, the, the sheer justification or rationalization about that specific position has changed a lot over this budget process, from, it was initially presented because there were new programming, to then it was to maintain current need. Both, both can be true, but what, what we're having is wrestling with, can, can we afford it by raising taxes? The answer could be yes, the answer could be no. I mean, that's up to each of us to, to demonstrate. But I guess to me, that is different than, we're not, we're not saying in order to balance the budget, we're cutting a position in the clerk's office, or we're cut, we're removing law enforcement officers from the streets. We are, if anything, increasing that amount. Maybe not at the amount that some departments or individuals would like, but to me, I think that's a, a much different distinction between not increasing to the same level as being something that is a decrease.
I understand.
I appreciate the conversation, though. I, I think it's...
I, I think Joe's point and decisions made by council does have an impact on what staffing needs are. Whether it was the e-scooter aspect, it added, um, it didn't have quite the impact that was at once anticipated, but then we added, uh, booting ordinance and background checks and, and those kind of things. So, you trade one for another. And yeah, the other was, didn't have the same impact, but every decision has an impact on staffing.
Agreed.
Same with ha- adding three new officers. What is the tipping point for HR and their staffing needs? Cause they participate in every one of the interviews. So, it's, for every decision made, it, it does have an impact in maintaining a level of service that our citizens have come to expect. And as we talked about with the city clerk's position, um, we have a, a reputation of maintaining that small-town feel by more personable, um, service. And if we want to maintain that, we have to have appropriate staffing to do so. And I think this clerk's office does a really good job in doing that, and they need the additional resources. I know the clerk's office would be recommending it if they did.
Madam Mayor, and I use that as an example, not to pick on the clerks, but just an example of the difficult decisions.
Why not?
That's how I feel. That's how I think we have to fill the gap.
Still honeybees.
A, a per diem or a cellphone bill here or there is, does not move the needle relative to the size of cost that we have to maintain this level of service.
Sure.
My perspective.
Appreciate, again, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton teaches me a lot, and I appreciate the healthy collaborative discussion even when we disagree. Uh, I, I guess I would just also add, I know there was a conver, I had a conversation earlier about not supporting, uh, the position of the Parks Department until we can get a cost recovery model put together on that. That would eliminate some additional costs as well. I know we didn't take a formal action, I don't think, on that particular one. Again, I don't know if this is even worthy of our time, if this is something that council supports. Councilmember Borton was very articulate and said he supports using the, the 3% mechanism to balance the budget. If that's the will of this body, then let's, let's take action and let our directors get on with their day.
2.25-ish, 2.227? It'll be...
2.21.
2.2 what?
2.21 is what?
One, I was 1%.
Good job.
Two, less than 1%.
That's our budget. So, right now, we're needing 737,000. Um, what I've calculated is we need 2.21%.
2.2, is it 2.2?
From the allowable 3%.
Okay, so council, at this point, um, are we good? Is where we're at moving forward for further discussion, um, next week as we bring detailed information on the compensation and benefits plan?
Madam Mayor? Am I the only one who has any desire to discuss the bus? It's an enormous expense. Looks like it, we're good.
Well, and I think with the bus, I mean, there's still some unknowns, and that's a, that's a not to exceed number because we're, we're looking for grants from the bus, and we're looking for partnerships from the community that are going to help fund this. So, I really hope we don't end up spending that much. I don't like the way that this, we're good, having to approve this without, um, having more information on those numbers.
Madam Mayor?
But...
But those, those numbers will come back to you once, um, VRT knows about the grants and, and that sort of thing. So, council at that time can choose not to move forward, but I, I think that to leave it in, that show, uh, support of, that the city needs to have more of a commitment to public transportation, and this is kind of the first step.
Right.
And how it will look will roll forward as you approve the direction we go.
Yeah, so it's in the budget, but it's not approved.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer.
Isn't the number that's in there, um, assuming all of the grants and everything, that would still be our portion? Or is it, that's the number to operate it, and then it comes off as those grants?
That, that's a required match, as I understand it, for the capital piece and the operation piece is an ongoing.
So, yes.
It's a partial, a partial year of, of operations, I think.
Yes.
And, and the capital. But they're going to try to offset some of the operations with, with partnerships with the businesses that it's going to, um, provide services to. So, if it's stopping at, you know, such and such locations, it's going to try to get some community partners to help offset the operations portion of it. So, hopefully less.
Madam Mayor? When, and I know it's not the same thing, but when the, the fun bus was going to, I think, Rowan Springs and I believe, you go to Village?
Hmm.
Um, wherever else it went, did any of those businesses end up contributing when those discussions happened? No. So, that, that's not going to happen. I mean, that's just reality, because they, they don't bring people. I mean, even when it was free, they didn't bring enough people to justify it. Whereas I think 650 people that rode the thing and it was free, cost $65,000. This will not be free. It won't bring the people to the businesses.
We're talking like employees. Talking to some major employers, hopefully, that might be willing to help get their employees to work. That was the plan, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, it, it won't happen. So, that, that 419 is going to be spent. No, uh, if we were to assume 419 is going to spend, be spent, is there anybody else who would say, if that's what's actually going to happen, I'm less interested in that not being the case?
Any other topic with council? So, at this point, um, I think Stephanie's direction on if, at, if this is what you want to move forward to with the, the discussion to commence as well next week.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum.
Jenny, can you put it on the page that shows the, the merit and, uh... Okay. I just want to make sure it was the merit, there was 2.5, not the market adjustment and...
It's a million dollars. It's a million bucks. In the three.
That's our cost of living. That's, that's the way I look at this, as our cost of living, which is the 3% is a cost of living. This is the cost of living. It almost always matches somehow. I guess one, you know, the other way to look at it, I know this is the, I'm sorry, I'm just talking Luke. So, you know, being a HR liaison in previous years, um, I recall that the merit is really best at 3%. And I know that this is your recommendation, and I'm just wondering why this would be better than a, say, 1.5% market and 3% merit, in your opinion? Does 3% gives you more room to work with within each category?
Anything, Councilmember Mylum, anything less than 2% doesn't drive a distingui, a distinction between performance ratings and performance outcomes. Anything at less than 2%, then industry-wide is suggested that you just do a flat across the board increase. Um, we take a lot of time spent analyzing what the state, what the state of Idaho is doing, other municipalities across the state. This year, we stretched and looked at the private sector in some areas, um, and the average was between 2 and 2.5% for a merit pool increase for organizations that do offer a merit program. The market adjustment, um, is a point in time recommendation that is made around, in preparation of the budget process, around March and April. And you need to look year over year at the, the employer cost index and what changes. So, when you look at that 2%, it, at that point in time, in March and April, it was about, uh, 2, 2, 2, 3%. So, if you take a look at that 2%, that would go across the board to all of the employees and your merit pool, 2.5%, giving enough delineation between performance ratings. It does provide enough opportunity for us to maintain competitive wages against the changes in the economy and the cost of services and goods. Anything less than 2% on a merit proposal, you really would be looking at 4% across the board.
I just wanted to make sure that 2.5 was enough to give any, any decisions.
But I appreciate the question.
Any other questions for the 2020 budget as we've discussed and have finalized today? If there is none, Jenny will take the information that she's gathered from you today and apply all the changes accordingly. And then on the 23rd, we'll be standing in front of you with your 2020 tentative budget. At that time, as, uh, Joe has mentioned, that's where we put the ceiling of the budget proposal. Later on in August, when we have your public hearing, you can reduce it if discussions are had. So, again, Jenny, we'll take the data that you have, we'll put together our final budget amount to propose to you on the 23rd of July. Again, if there's anything that you need from us, please, please, please reach out to us. I don't think I have any outstanding items. Jenny, do you have any items?
I do not.
Mayor, any items? Well, with that, I will extend a huge thank you to you guys' time, um, for making the second workshop. Appreciate the dialogue and all the directors and staff who attended today. I know it's, it's a long day, but again, great dialogue, great questions. Every year, we're going to schedule a meeting with each of, each of you as our post-budget discussions, and we look forward to the feedback and any potential changes. Every year, we change a little bit. Uh, again, we appreciate the input and the feedback that you give us. But again, I just want to say thank you to everybody. Thank you for putting the budget together, Jenny and Brad. Uh, again, appreciate everybody's staff time. Um, again, I'll hand back to the mayor, but again, I, I think at this point, finance is good where we need to be.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you to our teams. I know finance and all the departments, the work that goes into this is crazy, but we appreciate you and your staffs and all you do. So, with that, if there's nothing further from council, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second. The motion is second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.